So, um, as always, I don't know if we broadcast live as well tonight?
Uh, we're digitally recorded, I'm not sure about broadcast.
Okay, so we're, we're either, uh, broadcast live and digitally recorded or just digitally recorded, so please know that. And, um, so we have, uh, I guess I'll just start with, uh, is there anyone here for open meeting? No? Okay, well, we'll move on to our agenda item, which is-
Mr. Chairman, you have a single, uh, item tonight, and that's the interview of Travis Brown as your, as a candidate for the DPW Director's position.
Yeah.
But before we get to that, I, I think you all met Lori, but for the folks at home, Lori Reed is the new Executive Administrative Assistant for the town. She's taken over for Tanya, and it's a seamless transition to date. We're delighted to have her and looking forward to great things from her, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did prepare some questions for you.
We did, I, I wouldn't mind, uh, 'cause I know Brian, you were a little involved in the search committee as well.
Yep.
Would you mind, um, uh, just sort of telling us how that process went?
Sure, the, uh, uh, we interviewed, I think we had, uh, nine applicants, we interviewed three. Uh, and we, we were pleased with the quality of the applicants, uh, that we interviewed. But I think the committee came to a realization that, um, each of the other two candidates, other than Mr. Brown, uh, actually seemed to have a better fit, uh, for different sized departments. One for perhaps, um, uh, more of a foreman's role, and the other one for a much larger department, uh, and that had been the experience. So, th- they both were qualified, certainly qu- all three were qualified to, to do the job, but I think in terms of fit,
Mm-hmm.
um, they fit either again larger or smaller departments. And, um, so the committee came to the conclusion that, uh, they would send you one name, which is not the norm, we understand that, but, uh, the, the purpose of, of, uh, doing that was to tell you that, I mean, after looking at the candidates, um, it was not close. The evaluations were not close, they were, uh, they found Mr. Brown to be, uh, a very qualified candidate and recommend him to you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Trav, you wanna come up? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Would you mind, uh, sitting in that seat so that we catch both, uh, microphones? Thank you.
Well, I want Lori to take one, she's a good writer, so. Well, I'll take it if you have it.
Will you give us a couple minutes just to sort of flip through this? And we'll start getting into some questions that we have prepared, super difficult questions?
Mm-hmm.
Been busy getting certifications, huh?
Yeah, I did quite a bit since, uh, I started. I call it my complete street.
Brian, is this, uh, document that you received, the search committee had received as well?
Uh, I don't think we got quite, uh, quite this level of detail on the certifications, but we did get a packet, uh, at the search committee level, so yes.
Okay.
When we did the search committee, I didn't have the one-on-one from the complete streets yet.
Okay.
Got that A of eight.
So in ten years, this will be that thick?
Let me lead off with, um, you know, this is well done and professional. And I think everything you've done during the search committee time, um, uh, as far as following up with, uh, post-interviews and all that sort of stuff's been, been very professional. So, um, you know, I'm glad that we're sort of at this point now where we're gonna go through some of the things that matter to our community as well, as far as important things and how you, you maybe manage some of those questions, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Jamie, you wanna lead us up?
Yeah, a few questions Travis, um, please discuss a management crisis you have faced and how you handled it.
Um, uh, since we're, uh, the employee that had an issue with another, uh, 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 issues of the issues, I had a talk with him and went over what I expected of him and wanted to know what his side of it was. At the end of the talking, we agreed that he understood what I expected and, and honestly, uh, getting a good fit, you know, just, uh, with a little misunderstanding of his part and the other ones, where I just didn't know that he was being paid well. Took it probably worse than what it was.
Okay, um, please, you're done, right, please discuss your personal customer service philosophy.
I would treat everyone as I would want them to be treated, you know, um, I'd listen to what they have to say and do what I can with what I have and, um, I evaluate every situation, so, uh, not one question that's not important.
And, uh, one more, um, if Hubbardson was faced with a forecast of pending ice, of a pending ice storm, what would you do to prepare the department and the community, and who would you include in your preparations?
Before I answer, could I just re- re-reference back to this, were you around here when we had our ice storm in, in Hubbardson?
Those were the two that I had, the last two storms we had, uh, were pretty significant, they were the s- the two significant storms of the year. And the ice storm was the last storm.
No, I meant the big ice storm.
That was under Lynn.
That was under Lynn, so forget it. All right, anyway, sorry to interrupt, so.
I'll, I'll reread it Travis, if Hubbardson was faced with a forecast of a pending ice storm, what would you do to prepare the department and the community, and who would you include in your preparations?
I would, um, get all the crew together and make sure that all the equipment was together with chainsaws, everything was ready to go, along with the, the equipment vehicles plowed. Make sure we had enough material, and then I would communicate with, uh, the EMD, police, fire, uh, the administrator, and make sure that we all had a plan that, um, you know, we could send out cold red and, uh, let people know that there is a storm coming that will be safe and be off the road, and let us do what we need to do, you know, on the roads. And, um, I have communicated with the fire and police in the past, and, because we have been short-staffed, so, um, we've asked them to help us, you know, they, they plow the slave building for us, keep it open for the police, and, uh, they keep our entrances open, close to the station, so if they had a call, they would be able to come back. So, we have incorporated everybody, pretty much, and, uh, when we do have a significant storm, even on a regular storm, you know, every little bit helps.
What was the first acronym you used, EMD, DMD?
EMD.
That's what I thought, okay.
Emergency Management.
That's what I was gonna, okay, EMD, okay. Um, yeah, 'cause that's, I mean, w- one of the difficult, really difficult decisions for somebody in your position, as well as with collaboration with all the departments you talked about, is what to prioritize when something comes like that as well. Whether or not it's, it's, it's a pending storm we're talking, or if it's something that has come and has overwhelmed us, you know, so, um, you know, your, your comfort level with the departments, I, I think based on what, uh, some of the recommendation letters I've just read in here and the support you've gotten from Dennis, or, you know, uh, seems to, seems to show that there's a solid foundation of, uh, respect and trust between you and the departments right now, is that, you agree?
Yep.
Uh, okay, Pat, you wanna grab the next?
Sure, sure. Um, have you had any excess, uh, success in applying for state, federal, or any private grants applicable to the DPW? I know you've been in it for a short time, but.
I have done, um, the Chapter Ninety, which we just finished, uh, Twin Hill and Pine Crest.
Mm-hmm.
That was a pavement project for our Chapter Ninety for this year, and actually, starting tomorrow, we'll be doing our, uh, crack sealing of Route sixty-two and Barry Road. And that's the other part of the Chapter Ninety for this year, actually for the TIP grant. I've been going to all the NPO meetings for that, and that's for Worcester Road this, it's gonna be opened, uh, the tenth month there. And you won't see it this year, you'll see it next year, just because of how late it is in the season.
Yep.
And I have been on top of Malone and McBroom on the Gardner Road project.
Okay.
And they should be, um, having that by the end of the month.
What's the status on that, do you know?
I'm actually meeting with them. They're, um, well, they should be all, it was at the twenty-five percent, I believe, that we need and to stay, 'cause we were on the NPO meetings, that was on, and then now they put us on the appendix, so, I need this, and I told them I needed a copy sent over to, uh, DOT, um.
Malone and McBroom.
Yep, Malone and McBrooms is actually sending that over to them, so I'll have a copy and, uh, DOT will have one also, 'cause they wanna see it.
I think this also might be in reference to like a, a strap grant, the Small Town Rural Assistance Program also, so that may, I know we're not, um.
Yep. Not eligible this year, next year I can do it. I actually had talked with them because, um, at one time or another, we thought it was this year, but I had talked with them and they said no next year. It was this time next year, you can apply for it, there's a little window, so we have a whole nother year to, uh, get it all ready to. You can get it ready in the meantime, it's just you can't pass it in until their little window.
'Cause that's a huge help, that did, uh, all Westminster, from what you was at Lumber all the way to Westminster, that was.
Mm-hmm. Depot Road, all Westminster, Potter Grind.
Yeah, last time we got it, yeah.
And we basically promised a bunch of other roads for the next one, so we gotta get it right.
People are waiting.
Yeah, um, all right, I, just sticking on that one for one more second, if you, if you wouldn't mind. What, um, I guess what resources have you been able to understand or, uh, sort of be- begin the process of, uh, contacting to find out more information to help you about the grant programs that are available in the state? Have, have these classes you've taken, all that sort of stuff helped with that, or, or, wha- what can you do to, uh, what have you done?
The comple- the complete streets, um, helps you somewhat, it's more or less with that grant.
Yep.
And, um, uh, other grants, um, believe it or not, I've talked with a lot of other directors, uh, which is, is a large community out there, which we all kind of help each other, and, um, we all have the same problems. So, if, you know, by talking together, we understand what one might not, you know, we may have a gap there. So, um, honestly, I'm, I'm learning with the strap grants and, um, the TIP program. Like I said, I go to the NPO meetings to get an understanding of it, and that's kind of why, when I had, um, I knew that the Gardner Road project was going on, and when I started going to the meetings, they, um, I always saw the Worcester one. But then, as I was going, I saw Main Street and Gardner Road, but then they got put in the appendix, so that's when I went up and talked with Arthur Frost, which is the head of the DOT, and he had said that, um, because of the large amount, and I think I had that with, uh, one of the reviews that I had, I had mentioned that, that, 'cause it has such a large amount, that there's a lot of other towns looking for that amount. So, what I had said was, if we could somehow incorporate maybe a complete street up to the wreck field to cut off some of that price of the new Gardner Road, that would put us in a different bracket to where I would possibly get in, you know, easier than, I don't know what happened, I ended up with a million dollars, so it's, they have, uh, um, I had talked with Arthur and he gave me a lot of tips, and that was, one thing was more or less to stay on top of them and to have one sent over to him because of, um, with the twenty-five, if they can see what's going on, they can pretty much say, "Well, you need to fix this before it's all done, before you've already spent." So, it's just staying in touch with everybody and not eliminating anybody.
And I think if you, some of the reason I, I followed up there is I went to a listening session last week, or a week, two weeks ago, with Jim McGovern, Congressman McGovern, in Rutland, right, and, uh, his was, you know, he's our, our, uh, federal representative, state, the House Representatives, uh, and, um, that's what the side he came from, you know, um, meaning from the federal standpoint, how can he help? How can that, and, and we talked about a few things that I didn't really fully understand either, but he gave some context in his office for, um, you know, a town like us and the size that we are of what potential, uh, federal options there might be away from the strap, TIP, complete street, state programs, there's some, some others as well that have to do with the Department of Agriculture and, and other things like that. Anyway, but, so, I, I think the longer you're sort of doing it, the more context you're making, the more, um, uh, you know, options for the town that you can, you can advance.
So, Travis, if you were faced with a mandate to develop an annual operating budget that was level funded from last year's, how would you approach that process and how would you implement that plan?
Um, I would look at the year before's budget to see what, um, what the main objectives and, uh, and categories that I used, and see where I could maybe switch some things around, and then possibly look for money elsewhere to subsidize what I needed.
Have you ever been involved in establishing a pavement management plan for a municipality, and how did you go about this?
Uh, we actually have one established already, along with crack sealing. So, um, what happens is, uh, the plan that we have, it shows you when the roads had been either resurfaced, paved, so on and so forth, and they all have a numbering of where they are and where they stand. So, when it comes to year to year, you look and see which road, you know, is the worst, maybe has the most complaints on it, and you, and you kind of go from there, you know, and you have to update them, like we did Pine Crest, we did all of Pine Crest now. So, that's gonna be a zero, there's no problems with it right now, so if that falls to the bottom of the list.
How did that come out, that project, good?
Really well, I mean, we did, um, I didn't plan to do all of, um, Bemis at all, and we did all of Bemis, I had enough to do it.
Great.
It was gonna be a, it was starting to pop in some spots and, uh, we were able to take care of it, 'cause I just knew we weren't gonna be able to get back to it.
Yeah, for a while.
Yeah, so luckily we were able to finish it.
There's a lot of happy people in there.
Yeah, I had good compliments, I had an email today, I had sent over it, Brian, earlier. We all appreciate what we're doing, they know we're short-staffed, and I work with a one man from today.
Is that yourself?
No. I've worked with my new hire, believe it or not.
And al- also in there now, it'd be nice to plow, you know, I can do so much nicer work with it, working on a smooth surface.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's not, it's, and we understand the concerns of the community and how they want their roads repaired. We understand totally, I mean, we plow multiple times and then I, you know, we go over them, and that's what you're hearing is out there. So, I mean, we want them as smooth as they want them, and honestly, it speeds up the time.
Oh, absolutely.
That's wear and tear and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, me, um, can you give an example of a recent initiative you put forward that didn't work out as you intended, and what you learned from that experience?
Um, yeah, uh, I hired, um, I hired a person that thought that they were fit for the department. Ended up leaving on their own, but it just gave me, uh, that, uh, what to look for when it comes to hiring again. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, and not even that, it's, uh, when you lose people and you had jobs set up to have certain amount, and you only have one, and you have to switch things around, so you can fill the day.
Yeah. Okay, um, since no community can afford to acquire every conceivable piece of equipment for a department, how would you approach the sharing of resources with other municipalities and state agencies?
We do that right now with the bucket truck. It would have to be a, I, I feel a specialty piece of equipment of where, um, everybody's not in need of it all the time. Like the bucket truck was good, that kind of fits, you can just kind of make a schedule up and use it. Find like a sweeper or something like that, everybody's looking for a sweeper at a, you know, beginning of the year to sweep the roads, the line, paint, the pave, you know, so, something like that, I don't think would, you know, wouldn't work, but.
Hot box?
Hot box, I was thinking, but I mean, I mean, everybody wants to patch their holes in the beginning of the year, you know?
Yeah.
You know, that's, it's hard, you know, 'cause a lot of people, they're doing those same things in order to finish their, you know, start their projects for the year, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, there are, I'm sure, possibilities of other equipment, maybe like a rubber tire excavator or something like that, you know?
Great all.
Yeah, something, I mean, it, I mean, rubber tire excavator worked well with us for cleaning underneath the guardrails, just being able to go down and pick through them and clean them all up, you know, we're doing a lot of, uh, cutting shoulders and guardrails, so.
Mm.
We did make up a special tool to do it with the backhoe, but, you know, it's kind of awkward, the backhoe's gotta stick out there.
Yeah. Uh, Travis, sharing the bucket truck, how, how, that's, so that's working out pretty good, how, like last year, do you know how often we had that, is it?
I believe we had, um, for two weeks, and then we had it for three weeks.
And how many municipalities is that shared with, it's Rutland, five?
Yeah, yeah, Auburn, Barry, Rutland, us, and Paxton. I didn't realize it was that many.
Me neither.
Yeah, I thought this was like Rutland.
That's what we, that's what we made, yeah.
If each town, it would be fifteen weeks if there was, three, if each town had it for three weeks.
Some, yeah, some of us, it would be, every once in a while, we would have it for three, we only had it, I think we only had it for three weeks once, but otherwise, we had it for two.
Mm.
It would all depend on where it fell in the rotation. Right now, it's, um, they had an issue with the, um, arm on it, so they have it out for repair, and it was coming our way, so, on the back burner.
I wonder, you don't know how much we, would you have to kick in for that, or someone applied?
A thousand dollars each for each department.
Just the one time, when?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Covers everything, it goes into a kitty, so in other words, if you don't use it, it just keeps building up. Then like now, we have issue with the arms, so it goes out and gets filled. They have sent out an email to make sure everyone agrees, and then they send it out for repair, and it comes out of that money.
So, it's been a worthwhile, you feel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, the porch rewatering only has a small budget, so we've helped a lot with that part of it. And we do have, I got a list of trees that need to come down, um, for, either because they were in an accident, and they're just there until we can get a bucket truck, 'cause we can't reach them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, we do use it a lot, and we do have it.
Um, so, you know, you've been in front of us three or four times now, right, you started in March, April, March, March? So, that's April, May, June, July, August, five months, I need it to be on my fingers. Um, and we've, we've seen you through several seasons, we saw you at the tail end of a pretty tricky winter that had a couple of, of storms, so, you know, saw, saw the reaction there, um, you know, into the sort of spring cleanup, um, into the summer, a maintenance season or whatever you wanna call it, just making this up as we go here, and getting into a fall. One, one place we really haven't seen you is in the throes of the winter. We've known that you've been part of this before, but there are, um, there are times when, when, you know, there's a lot of heat on the select board, um, and potentially heat on you, uh, as far as how things are looking out there. I guess your comfort level in, you know, being asked by the select board to come in in a, some January Monday and say, "Hey, we need to talk to you." I mean, how, does that sort of thing scare you off, is that sort of thing, you know, just part of the job, or what are your thoughts on that?
Job, I mean, we need, I need to know what's going on, you know, I can't prove anything or help without knowing.
Yep.
So, I mean, uh, I know we all try to do our best out there, I mean, it is the weather, and the weatherman can't even predict that, so I mean, we do our best, I mean, I know just filling in the position, it's, you know, you get five weather channels going, and you're hoping that at least you can get a happy medium out of them and try to get ahead of the storm or find out when it's gonna stop, you know, and, uh, give the guys some, you know, some rest, and, you know, just everything, know how much material you have left, and, you know, there's a lo- there's a lot involved, so, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm, I've dealt with it before, I was in this position, probably not to the full in depth, but I mean, I plowed and I would always look at the weather to see when, you know, I didn't need the boss to tell me that the weather was gonna end in an hour, I could start cleaning now and be done before it and start treating, and I wouldn't be sitting here all day, you know, I mean, so, I always looked ahead.
A, a lot of what we've talked over the years at Select Board has been the decisions on when to head out, or when to head back out, or when to head back out again, what treatments to do at that time going in for your second time, your third time. How's your comfort level on how you feel you can, um, uh, make the appropriate decisions in those cases?
Um, I think we, well, the last two storms have pretty much shown you, though, I mean, it's, I was on my own there with the crew that I had, so I mean.
You're sure-handed too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, with, like I said, I had presented this all. Not dealing with the fifty-fifty anymore, so now we're allowed to treat more often, which quite honestly should have better roads. And do I ask for a little, uh, little break on the guys and myself to adjust to that? 'Cause now, you know, we're not gonna be seeing anything, and they have to adjust to not seeing anything. They're used to, you know, it's like breaking old rules, and now you're starting over again, you know? So, we're calibrating everything for salt, it's gonna be more times treated for less money, and we should have a better factor out of it, it's just seeing, and, and the salt's gotta work, people are gonna allow the salt to work. You don't drop it, it's not gonna be like, you know, black. Yeah, I mean, temperature is everything, you can drop as much material as you want on that, that ice storm, i- it didn't matter. You, you were dropping the materials so it didn't freeze to the ground, that was it, and then you were peeling it back up again, just so when it did stop, you didn't have the pack. And I think that proved, that last storm, we had the ice pellets, and it went all through the night when it wasn't even supposed to. Our roads were black by, you know, soon, especially as soon as the sun came out, they were, they were black.
What are your thoughts on, um, in years past, we had a, a guy on at night, uh, covered, one guy would stay on it just at night for any, uh, just through the winter, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I don't know, I honestly haven't, I mean, other than him sitting around, I mean, the, the on-call guy is pretty much that, you know? He, but he's sitting at home, and he'll get paid once he gets called in, and then he makes the determination of, does he need only a couple other guys, or does he need everybody to come in and treat the roads? And a lot of times when the PD calls, they, they say the town needs to be done. So, before he even leaves his house, he's already calling everybody. Usually everybody arrives, if, I mean, half the crew, believe it or not, lives in those. You know, other than that, I mean, uh, I've heard of prior dealings like that, you know? I mean, as it, at first, maybe it, it could be something where, you know, they start cleaning up around the shop, painting and stuff, but I mean, that's gonna come to a halt soon, you know, I mean, you can only do so much. So, I think them being at home, just being on-call, um, me seeing what the weather's gonna do, and if I know it's gonna be in at a specific time, I get them in a couple hours earlier and we go out to treat. I mean, us treating should, should cut in half of what we did, you know, it used to take us a couple hours to do the town. I honestly think it should only take an hour now, I would say, or an hour and a half, because there's no travel time to come back to fill. So, I mean, I think there's a lot there, I mean, the weather.
'Cause putting it down thinner, and you can go further.
Yeah, I'm putting down two hundred and fifty pounds per lane mile.
Missed that out, three hundred?
Oh, yeah, it was more than that.
Okay.
Okay.
And, but you had the sand hindering it. And we're in a co-op, we've done in the co-op, but we're in the co-op and this year we had fourteen. Salt price really down and so that's a benefit to us and everybody's using the treated salt. Barry's using just regular rock, but with us doing this with the salt, and I went over this a lot before, I didn't really stick it my neck out there to, to say, let's do this. But our material we covered now, so when we pick from the pile, it's dry. So when it goes in that truck, actually, the salt that's treated, when it falls, the treated salt will actually stick to the road. It will have less bounce than you have for a regular rock. Being that it's one treated and it's sitting undercover, which we didn't have before, we would mix it, we put it out in a pile, it's lodged to cover, so it would bleed out. We have had, like last winter, it was very warm, so we had a lot of rain, so all that potential of that treated salt leached out and was in the ground.
Yeah, I think you're onto something with, with going with just salt.
Yeah, I mean, Holden does it, you know, Gardner just switched over to it last year. I think they put it out a little much, but they switched over, they love it.
Yeah.
And, you know, like us, it's trial and error, we have different climate zones through the town, so we gotta see where we gotta maybe put a little more than.
And you'll probably see less, like sometimes you get, you have people complain about, well, you hit the town line and it's bare, I don't think we'll get as much of that now.
No, I mean, you also gotta look at the time that they treat, you know what I mean? I mean, we're gonna be, I guess, more or less, I guess, apples for apples, cuz we're straight salt now, treated and we're putting it down. I mean, I don't think you're really, I don't think we're gonna have that issue, I mean, the guys know that scraping it off, treating it, you know. Not treating it, putting it on an inch and a half of snow and then hoping it melts and then plow it off, that's a waste to me, I don't. But I, I had always wanted plowed and do it, cuz it goes down and burns it off faster. I honestly think that you're gonna see a big difference.
So I have one more, if you guys have any more, but I got another one. You know, you, you've sort of climbed the ranks, right? So, you know, that can cause tension just in any workplace. Do you, A, have you seen any signs that there's been any tension within your workplace, in your workspace? And B, do you think that any of that would spill over, you know, in the event that you were permanent director?
No, I mean, I was the team leader before, so I mean, Tim wasn't around, then I was there. I mean, I told them what they needed to do and they needed to do it, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we're here to do a job, we're not here to be sitting around twiddling our thumbs, I mean, people wanna see that. I believe that they've seen that, you know, that we've been out there, the work that we have done, I've heard, you know, numerous, you know, compliments through the town. So I mean, and I pass it on to the guys, I embed that into their head that, you know, it's, don't just do it to do it. Do it like it was yours and that, and when you present that and people see that, they do, they, they'll come and, and when they see you on the road, they'll say something. Don't look for it, but just do it because you wanna do it. And it's, it's definitely paid off for the guys, you know, and how they see it, you know, it's like anything, it's changed, so no, everyone, you get your grumps and everything else, you know. And you're not gonna have Peaches and Cream every day, you know, so I, I mean, you have to go day by day. But they kinda wanted to see me in there, you know, they enjoyed me when I was one of, you know, a part of the union and. I don't know, I just, I treat them fairly, that's just how, how I operate, I guess, you know, it's, respect me, I respect you. And I have a job to do and you have a job to do, so let's get some work done and fix the roads.
Travis has had a couple things, I'd just like to say like, come snow season, if, say, the storms don't come. Like, you know, you're expecting something in November and say, we're gonna dry November, do you, you know, there's still other things that can, you know, you can have correct, like, to do. Like, say you're gonna continue to work on cutting back, there's some brush or whatnot, because it hasn't snowed yet. Sometimes we have this lapse and it just seems like, Jesus, not much going on, they're waiting for the snow, but there's no snow.
So you do have things that, you know, lined up if we don't get.
Yeah, brush mowing, I mean, right now, it'd be a lot more brush mowing if I had bodies, but it's, you know, winter time's a good time for that. Cuz it's all the leaves are off, you can see what you're doing, we cut back a lot of stuff then, if the ground's still not frozen, then, you know, we can cut shoulders and we can do stuff like that. I wanna advertise, I gotta ask Bob to put it up on the board, but anybody looking for roadside fill, possibly towards New Westminster area. Would be beneficial to us, cuz we'll have a lot of that between that, Adams and Prentice Hill. And we got a lot coming up Lombard, we still haven't finished that, so.
And one other thing, anything that do you expect from us, like as far as lines of communication, do you feel that, you know, you can approach us or talk to us, I mean, every?
Yeah, I think honestly, we all need to work as a team, I think if you kinda just keep people out of the mix. I mean, you don't understand what's really happening, you know, and it's more or less hearsay from other people. But if you stay in the loop and that way, when people might say something to you, you, you'll know, you know, say, no, this is really what we're doing, you know. And, or you know that we had a truck down or something like that, or, you know what I mean? It's more or less not, not knowing what your job is, I guess, you know what I mean? When people come to you, at least you have an answer for it, other than, well, I don't know, you know what I mean? You have communication between departments, which you need and I think that you should, I mean, it's a small town, you need to utilize what you have. And, you know, like I said, I got great communication between the police and the fire and when something happens, they need something in, you get them in.
Okay, any more, anything else, anyone else at the table have anything, anyone in the audience have anything?
The other thing I would say is a compliment to Travis, he knows what he doesn't know, then he spends time getting educated on it, which I think is a plus in any kind of business. And I've seen that over the last year, so hopefully he continues that, gets better, that's why I have less and less to do at work. No, but yes, he spent the time learning a lot of things over the last year, so.
Excellent, backhand a compliment to him. Well, again, I don't have anything else, do you have any questions for us?
No, I just wanted, you know, being that I stay in that full-time position, just want the communication and understanding and work together.
All right, well, we're here to decide, I guess, we can, you know, make a motion here to appoint Travis, we can push it off, we can throw it out and do a new committee, we can do whatever we want, so.
I'd, I'd make the motion to appoint Travis.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. So welcome aboard?
Yep.
Welcome aboard to it, you've done a great job impressing us, I know that, or me anyway, specifically with these last five months, so, you know, keep it up.
I mean, you've, every time you've came in, you, we've listened to you, you've listened to us, I mean. You've done a good job, yeah.
So regarding whether this is like a retroactive appointment?
Well, we're gonna, we're in the process of, I'm still negotiating this of course, but because we couldn't finalize anything without having spoken to you. But I think this will probably roll back to July one.
Okay, that's what I figured.
So it's really, I think, your vote on Monday night, the twenty-first, well, this vote, I suppose, I don't know whether you're gonna include the other two folks. But I think it's a vote to, what's the term you folks use when it's administrator's appointment as opposed to a board appointment, the wave notice?
Wave, yes, wave.
I think technically that's what you're doing is waving notice, so, and we can do that. But I'm, as you may remember, I'm establishing a rather more elaborate process for you on the twenty-first, so I needed to know tonight whether to do that or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so thank you for that.
Excellent. All right, you got anything else? All right, we have no other agenda items?
No, that's it.
So take up a motion to.
Make a motion to. We want to go easy on Laurie as well as Travis.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, adjourned at six thirty-eight.